I can't see people. I just like, can't see people. I couldn't see the speakers place.
Okay. Okay, welcome everybody tonight. I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting. And I'm gonna call it to order. I'm calling both the consolidated regular meeting and the special meeting to order at the same time. The one item on the special meeting agenda, C-17, is a final subdivision map which we take in conjunction with the regular meeting consent calendar in numerical order. First, we're gonna have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
The second thing on our agenda is our pledge of allegiance, and tonight it'll be led by council member Dave Coles. Our invocation today will be by Pastor Tom Strater, Grace Presbyterian Church.
First, thank you for the invitation, and thank you all for your service. Let us pray. As Psalm 24 states, "The earth is the Lord's and everything in it, the world and all who live in it. For you, O Lord, founded upon the seas, and you established it upon the waters." Yes, Lord, all belongs to you. That means this beautiful city of Vista belongs to you. Thank you. What a wonderful blessing and a gift. And you call us to be good stewards of what you have given to us. And for that reason, I thank you for all those who serve, volunteer, and work for this city. I ask that you would bless them and keep them, and your face continue to shine upon them. Oh, Lord, I also thank you for the council that's before us. I ask that you would give them ears to hear, and a very special understanding so that they can have wisdom to go about doing the business of the city today. And, Lord, as we celebrate during this time, we thank you so much for your presence, the gift of life that we find in you. And, Lord, we pray in the name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, with that, we had no closed session today. And so, the next on our agenda, our city clerk, Marcy Killian, will present the official results from the November 4th, 2014 general municipal election.
Good evening. The results of the November 4th, 2014 general municipal election were certified by the San Diego County Register of Voters on December 2nd. The total number of ballots cast in the city of Vista was 15,279. The certified results show that Judy Ritter has been elected to serve as mayor, John J. Aguilera and John Franklin have been elected to serve as members of the city council for four-year terms. A resolution is presented tonight to adopt these results.
Thank you. The next thing I'm going to do is, actually, we have a proclamation for Councilmember Coles in recognition of his service to the... Oh, we have to vote? We have to vote on the resolution? So sorry. Okay. It was hurrying us along here. Okay. So...
I'll move that we accept the resolution.
Second.
Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, should I go to that? Okay. Then next, I have a proclamation here for Councilmember Dave Coles. And I'm going to read it. We'll just do it right here, actually. "Whereas Councilmember Dave Coles, a native of North County Vista, resident since 1998, and Vista Unified School District Superintendent for eight years, was elected to the Vista City Council in 2010. He was appointed and served as deputy mayor in 2013. And while representing the city, Councilmember Coles has served on many regional boards and commissions, including the Regional Solid Waste Association, called RISWA, the Board of Directors, the San Diego Association of Governments Public Safety Committee, that was Sandag, the Encina Wastewater Board of Directors, and North County Dispatch Joint Powers Agency Board of Directors. Whereas Councilmember Coles has helped provide financial stability to the city while maintaining essential community services and jobs under very difficult economic conditions. Whereas Councilmember Coles was also instrumental in the incorporation of the healthy Vista element of the Vista General Plan, which promotes community health and well-being as priorities in future planning decisions. Many successes have been achieved during Councilmember Coles' tenure on the city council, including starting construction on the Paseo Santa Fe project, an all-time low crime rate for the city of Vista, the elimination of the city's multi-year structural deficit, significant investments in street and roadway improvements, and the craft brew industry has put Vista on the map as a tourist attraction. Whereas Councilmember Coles has given his time to numerous causes and issues, has been active in several service clubs, supporting the Moonlight Cultural Foundation and the Vista Community Clinic. Councilmember Coles has always made the needs of the entire community his top priority, putting the well-being of all Vistans above any outside interests. Now, therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council express their sincere appreciation to Councilman Dave Coles for his service to the Vista residents and surrounding community, and hereby proclaim Wednesday, December 10th, 2014, as Councilman Dave Coles' Day in the City of Vista." So congratulations, Dave. Deputy Mayor John Aguilera wanted to say something.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know I just said this a few minutes ago, but I just want to repeat a few things that I said earlier this evening. You know, Dave's gonna be missed as a leader of our council. Of course, he's been a leader in a community for many years. He's serving as superintendent, teacher, and administrator. You know, he's dedicated most of his life to the public. And I think he should be thanked for that and recognized for that. We're certainly gonna miss him here at council. I'm gonna miss his ability to help negotiate his leadership skills. And like I mentioned earlier, you know, some of the decisions that we have to make sometimes pertain to our family, our friends, our neighbors. And Dave has always been able to make the right decisions for the city. And sometimes those aren't the most favored decisions by some of our friends and families. But he's always put the city ahead of his own personal needs. And that's certainly gonna be missed, Dave. And again, just gonna miss you as a friend as well. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. And so, did you want to say something?
Sure. Well, really, I feel like a winner tonight. The time that I was able to be a part of the city has certainly been invaluable to my own personal fulfillment. And I know that, you know, I'm but a small measure of any progress that the city has been able to make during my time here on the council. And it's my hope that now that the city is really positioned to launch into a dynamic future, that the council will be able to continue to work together for the betterment of the city, to give support to our leaders, our administrative staff, and our working staff, our fire, our sheriff, all the people who make our city a wonderful place to live, our parks and recreation. We just really have a jewel here to protect. And I'm anxious to see the new formation of the council join hands to carry us forward into the next decade. So thank you for my time on the board. Thank you for allowing me to get to know as many people as I've gotten to know in the city. And this time has been truly a wonderful time for me. And I'm looking forward now to another real retirement. Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you. I'm gonna give him his proclamation here. And then with that, then our city clerk, Marcy Killian, is going to administer the oath of office first to me, then to Councilmember Aguilera, and then to our newly-elected council member, John Aguilera. So I'm gonna come and bring that to you. I mean, John Franklin. I have two Johns on my council now. I, Judy Ritter, do solemnly affirm... That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States... And the Constitution of the State of California... Against all enemies foreign and domestic. And I will bear true faith and allegiance... To the Constitution of the United States... And the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely... Without any mental reservations... Or purpose of evasion... And that I will well and faithfully... Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Thank you. Let's do that. Y'all wanna come and get a picture with Marcy? I'll take a picture of all of us.
I, John Aguilera, do solemnly swear... I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States... And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance... To the Constitution of the United States... And the Constitution of the State of California. And I take this obligation freely... Without any mental reservation... Or purpose of evasion... And I will willfully and faithfully discharge... The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Now it's John Franklin's turn. New council member.
I, John Franklin, do solemnly swear... That I will support and defend the Constitution... Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance... To the Constitution of the United States... And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely... Without any mental reservation... Or purpose of evasion... And that I will well and faithfully discharge... The duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
We have one more presentation before we go to our consent calendar. Oh, we need to do Lena first. Lena Wright with Congressman Darrell Issa's office has a presentation.
I'm not sure how you want me to do this, but the congressman wants to send his congratulations to Mayor Judy Ritter on your reelection. On behalf of the congressman, congratulations. And we take a lot of confidence knowing that our city is in well-experienced and expert hands. And as well, for John Aguilera, thank you for your service, and we appreciate you returning to share again your experience with us. And congratulations to our good friend, John Franklin, who, as you know, was a legislative aide for the congressman. And we look forward to seeing your expertise and your wisdom brought to the fore for the city of Vista. Community leadership is close to our homes and our hearts, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thanks, Lena. Thank you so much. Then we have one last presentation with Jane Mitchell from the Moonlight Cultural Foundation. And I guess the members of the Vista City Council will join me at the podium down here, and we're gonna accept a check supporting the productions of 2014.
So the Moonlight Cultural Foundation doesn't do it on our own. We do it with our board members, our employees, and all the people of the community who support and attend Moonlight Stage Productions at the moonlight. So we're gonna present a check today to the city, a ceremonial check. Tori is gonna give a little speech, because I'm not prepared.
Good evening. My name is Toria Watson, and I am serving as the interim executive director for the Moonlight Cultural Foundation, and as Jane mentioned, in support with my fabulous board members. It's the sole mission of our nonprofit organization to support Moonlight Stage Productions' performances at the incredible Moonlight Amphitheater and historical AVO Playhouse. We believe every great city has a great cultural destination, and for the city of Vista and North San Diego County, that is the Moonlight Amphitheater. The Moonlight has an amazing capacity for bringing people together to experience the joy of live theater and to greater comprehend the understanding, the vital role of arts in our humanity and in our community. It's our goal to preserve our city's jewel for future generations to come. This year was record-breaking, with 58,750 patrons in attendance. All four summer season shows are in the top 10 highest grossing shows in Moonlight Stage Productions' history. Additionally, the foundation's outreach program, Next Stage Outreach, provided free access to every Vista Unified School District educator, free access to 500 military families, and free access to 3,000 elementary school children to see Mary Poppins. We're very proud of that. Our foundation also provided over $226,000 in marketing support and $30,000 to support special requests such as actors and orchestra subsidies and gas stipends. In addition to that, tonight, on behalf of the Moonlight Cultural Foundation Board of Directors, our donors, our corporate sponsors, and our members, we would like to present a check to the city of Vista for $150,000 to maintain the quality productions and incredible experience of our beloved Moonlight. Together, our total support for 2014 was $406,000.
And a quick heads up, because our founder, Kathy Braumberg, is here in the audience, and it would never have happened without her. So thank you, Kathy.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the city clerk. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So I need to... I have one item, C-6, to be asked to be removed by the public. And then, are there any items that the council would like removed?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull C-17, please.
Any other ones? If none...
C-16.
C-16? Okay, and if there are no other ones, then I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay. So the next thing we're going to do will... C-16, which was pulled by... What? Oh, it's C-6. Okay, C-6 we'll pull first. C-6 is a grant of an easement to San Diego Gas and Electric and declaration of veterans' memorial park covenants. It's Chuck Raybo. Chuck, turn the mic around. It's backwards there now. Thank you.
Sometimes I'm backwards. I have no trouble with this. My only trouble, I'm sorry, is the title. It's a veterans' memorial park. The entire document speaks to it. Marcy just happened to make a mistake at the title. And as a combat Vietnam veteran, I'd like to see that changed. Just the title, not the document itself. The document itself is just fine. And if I can... You have in front of you a discussion and a artist rendering of the High Noon Rotary Military Memorial Wall. We're more than two-thirds of our way raising funds for it. We hope to kick it off shortly after the first of the year and have a ribbon cutting on Memorial Day. A year ago in May, the council wisely approved or issued a proclamation declaring Vista a Purple Heart City. I would propose that in both parks, a copy of the Purple Heart City proclamation that's readable to the public be installed in a proper fashion. Tomorrow, at the Military Order of Purple Heart meeting here in Vista, I'll pick up the original document. I'll take it to North County Graphics and have it blown up to the right size. And then maybe somebody on staff can work with me to see that that happens. Thank you for your time. And since C-16 was pulled, I'm all for C-16. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay, then the next thing on our agenda will be... We have to vote? Okay, then the next thing on our agenda will be...we have to vote? Oh, I'm not doing very well tonight, am I? Okay, so I would...is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve C6, the grant of the easement to San Diego Gas and Electric and declaration of the Veterans Memorial Park.
I'll second it.
Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so then, the next thing will be C16, which is the Vista Chamber of Commerce Service Agreement for Grant Funds.
Would you like a report on this?
Yes, please. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Kevin Hamm, Director of Economic Development for the city of Vista. Since 2004, the city has contracted with the Vista Chamber of Commerce for specific services supporting Vista's business community and providing general information to the public. Since 2006, the financial commitment for these services has been $20,000 a year. The services have included maintaining a business office within the city of Vista open to the public with regular business hours, facilitating communications on matters of common interest between the city and the business community, publishing a calendar and directory in Vista, and a Vista Street map, maintaining the calendar of events, and supporting the city's economic development efforts, and the other efforts of business associations in the community. On November 18th, 2004, the Vista Council, acting as the successor agency, adopted a resolution approving a sale agreement for real property located at 127 Main Street to the Vista Chamber of Commerce. In order to make its down payment, the Chamber has proposed that instead of an annual agreement, the city and Chamber enter into a five-year services agreement and provide an upfront payment of $100,000, which will be used towards the down payment for the purchase of the property. The proposed agreement, as Exhibit 2, outlines the scope of business support services that the Chamber will provide over the five-year term. In addition to the services provided in previous agreements, the Chamber will also produce an annual business showcase and work with the city to survey the business community on issues important to the city and Chamber. Staff recommends the city enter into a five-year agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for business support services and grant the Chamber the full five-year payment of $100,000 prior to the close of sale of 127 Main Street, so the funds can be used towards the purchase. The total cost of the agreement is $100,000 to be paid for in one full upfront payment. Approval of the staff recommendation will amend the operating budget to appropriate $100,000 in the non-departmental state and local association's expenditure account. This would be funded by the use of monies remaining in the prior year fund balance account. This concludes my report. And Ashley Bedard is here. She is the chairwoman of the Vista Chamber of Commerce. If you should have questions for her, and I am available for your questions as well.
And I have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker first? Okay, Arubay Lopez?
Hello, Councilman Mayor. My name is Arubay Lopez, and I have some questions on the deal. My understanding is that in 2008, the city of Vista acquired the property located in 127 Main Street for $485,000. The reason for the city to purchase the property was specifically to lease it to the Chamber of Commerce. Because the property was in disrepair, the city also gave the Chamber of Commerce a loan of $189,000. That loan would not have to be paid back if the Chamber stayed in the building for 20 years. When the property was being remodeled, the contractor discovered additional work that had to be done to the property. According to the paper, the additional cost was $45,000. My question is, who ended up paying for the $189,000 and the additional $45,000, the city of Vista or the Chamber of Commerce? If the city of Vista paid for it, that means that the property ended up costing the city of Vista $719,000. 485 plus 189 plus 45 is 719. In the same meeting that the city...and then the city sold the property for a lot less, even though the city has a six-year contract with the Chamber of Commerce, so there's really no need for the city to sell. So my question is, the $189 and the $45,000, is the Chamber of Commerce not having to pay that, or whatever happened to that money? Thank you.
Yeah, you want to...Kevin, do you want to take and answer that?
So I think the city made some improvements to the building. The price that we're talking about today is $425,000. And actually, that price was talked about before. That was something that was brought to council last month. The price per square foot is $200 a square foot, which is the average price in the downtown right now that we see.
Just to add on to that, there were significant roof repairs and some structural repairs when we obtained the building that needed to be made before we could actually lease it out. So the city, or actually the successor agency prior to that, did perform those repairs to make the building habitable to be able to lease out.
And it's necessary that we sell this building? Is that correct?
Yeah, due to the dissolution of redevelopment, we're required to sell the building. There's, as we've talked about before, there's no timetable at this point with the state, but we are required to dispose of any of the properties that this successor agency owns.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera, did you have a question?
Yeah, I think those are valid concerns that the citizen had. So this is redevelopment property, successor agency property at this point. We're required to sell it. The...I heard you mention that it was the successor agency that paid for the improvements. Is that true?
Yeah, it would have been the redevelopment agency at the time, which has now become the successor agency as of 2012.
And then, when we sell the property, obviously, that money goes back to the successor agency. And the city of Vista only gets whatever, 14 cents on the dollar, right?
On the dollar.
Yeah, that's correct. We sell the property. All the taxing entities in the area will receive their portion or their percentage of the sale, and the city of Vista receives 14 percent.
Okay.
Councilmember Campbell?
So just to follow up on Mr. Lopez's question about $189,000 loan that was given to the Chamber, could you give a little bit of background on that? I believe he's referring to it as for improvement. Was that loaned to the Chamber, or...I don't know.
Yes. I would say that maybe John Meyer might be able to add some of the history on that.
We can have Brett Schnazbach from the Chamber come up, specific.
So the loan that is being discussed was made with the intention that as we stayed there for the 20 years of the term of the lease, that it would be gradually forgiven. But the idea was if we ever broke that lease and left, whatever had not been forgiven at that point, we would owe immediately at that time. So that's how the loan was built into the agreement, and it was there as a safeguard that the Chamber wouldn't just take off after a few years.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my questions at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I think this might be a question for you, Brett, or perhaps Ashley. I'm not sure which. But in the transaction of foregoing the city monies for the five years, you have the resources for the five years to do without the city money coming in over those five years?
So we actually do have a reserve account. Being a nonprofit organization, we're obviously not rich. So it is in our best financial interests to keep some money in our reserve account to get us through the next couple of years. And then we are actively and have continuously and been actively pursuing investors' grant money, just as we do normally in our typical years, to get us through these five years. Yes. I don't know. Suck. Okay.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Just to add on to that, so I know it's not part of the resolution here or the recommendation, but given that, you know, my...I had some concerns, and I think, Ashley, we discussed this, that the city was, you know, essentially subsidizing the Chamber. And I think this Chamber does great work. So I'm a big supporter of the Chamber. Brett, you've done a fantastic job. Ashley, you've been doing a great job this year. Our parade was fantastic. I congratulate you on that. You know, it's an organization like this that brings all those people to the city of Vista. We had thousands of people down there, making them aware of our downtown, the improvements, the changes, the businesses that are now open in our downtown. So I think Vista's a better place because of the Chamber, and I think you deserve to have your own place. Having said that, I think that as the city continues to progress, particularly over the next five years, you'll get bigger and better. And I hope that in five years, we can actually cut the subsidy. In other words, you know, this is the $100,000. I'm in support of it, but I think after the five years, I probably won't be in support of continuing to subsidize the Chamber. But I am in support of this agreement this evening. So again, congratulations on the good work and the positive work and how you support our businesses. Thank you.
Do I make a motion or anything?
Sure. I'll make a motion to recommend that we approve the agreement for the grant of public funds with the Vista Chamber of Commerce and amending the operating budget for 2014, '15 to reflect that.
I'll second it. Now we have two more speakers. Councilmember Campbell?
I was actually going to make the motion to approve the agreement. And I do want to second a comment that Councilman Aguilera said, which is, you know, after the five-year time period of this, that I would like to see the Chamber be successful enough in the community that we aren't providing that additional subsidy to the Chamber and that we can use that money elsewhere in the community. But I am supportive of what the Chamber's doing in the community. But I think that over the course of the next five years, hopefully you can grow and become even more successful.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you. I did want to reiterate what Deputy Mayor Aguilera said and the support that I have for the Chamber of Commerce. You do a fabulous job for the city. Any event that you put on, for instance, this past weekend, was awesome. It was well-attended. It was a lot of fun. It was well-organized. In any event, you do does that. And it brings people into our community from outside of our community, not just benefiting those of us who live here, but the entire region. And it's very, very much appreciated. And I know some people have asked me how I would consider this particular vote, given that I voted against selling you the property. And my objection to that was over the financial issues and the loss of money, and it was about the property. It wasn't about the Chamber being the owner of the property. I actually support the Chamber of Commerce very much, and I think that you are integral into the community, and I want to do what I can to support you. I just didn't...I just couldn't get behind the sale of that property. And I know that you and I spoke a little bit briefly about it, Brett, and you understand my position. And just to also reiterate that a little bit down the road, we could look at things again. But I would support you having this property and being the owner of the building more than I would support anyone else getting that property had it not been sold to you. So I hope that that kind of answers some of the questions that I had received from some community members. But thank you.
Actually, I agree with all of you. So with that, if I don't have any more comments, we could actually cast our votes. We have a motion and a second.
I motion.
I second. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is...yeah, C17, which is final subdivision map of 2019, '21, and 2049 East Vista Way.
Would you like a presentation or do you just have questions?
No, I actually would like a presentation. I only received the email that this had been added this afternoon, and it didn't give me enough time to do the research into this item that I would normally do and I would like to have done, because it was a little late getting to us. So if you wouldn't mind giving a detailed report, I'd be most gracious.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm John Conley, Community Development Director. This is a final map for a property on East Vista Way. It's on the east side of East Vista Way, just south of Ormlands. Final map has to come to the council for legislative approval once all the conditions of a tentative map are met. The tentative map is a discretionary action that's taken by the city in approving the project. That was taken back in April of 2013 by the Planning Commission. It was for a 73-unit condominium development on 9.2 acres. That was approved by the commission unanimously. The developers filed grading and final map and building permits for the project, and we're in the process of processing those. Unfortunately, this item did not get on the council's regular agenda because of a miscommunication between our staff. And so it came in late, and we had it as a special meeting agenda item because of its late nature. We had to get it on an agenda prior to the end of the year because the developer, Shea Holmes, has a tax certificate for a recordation of the final map, which will expire at the end of the year. And it will take several months to obtain a new tax certificate, so we rushed to get it on this agenda. So my apology for the lateness of it. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Do you have any other questions? I make a motion for approval?
I'll second.
Councilmember Campbell, I didn't see you quick enough there.
No, I was just going to make a motion to approve it.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda are our discussion items. And the first item is appointment of a deputy mayor. Deputy mayor is...actually, he represents the mayor. And so I just...it needs to be somebody that I can trust and who I can call at the last minute if I get sick or have an emergency. And sometimes give him an hour notice in the morning at 6 o'clock. If I have a 7 o'clock speaking appointment, they have to be able to take over and, you know, do my duties that I have. So it's important...the person that fills that is an important position. It needs to be somebody that I can trust. So I would like to...I guess I would like to make a motion and see if I...motion to nominate John Aguilera, as he's done it for the last year. And so he has the experience, and I would appreciate having him for one more year if that would be possible. So I'd make that nomination. John Aguilera, Councilmember Aguilera, Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your vote of confidence. And I mean, I guess I'll second that for myself.
Do I have any discussion?
I...in your comment, that the deputy mayor is someone who represents you, the mayor, and it has to be somebody that you can trust, I like to think that you could trust any of your council members to do a good job to represent the city council in your absence. So I just wanted to say that out loud, that I think we'd all do a great job for you. Any one of the four of us would represent you and the city council with the utmost honor and respect. I like to think that we would. So that was my only comment.
Okay, if I have no more comments, I guess call for the vote. Let's see where I can vote. Oh, there it is. Okay. Motion passes four to one. The next thing on our agenda are appointments to our...of our officials to boards, committees, and commissions. And actually, if I could, I'd just like to make a couple of changes on that. I'd like to change, if I could, I'd like to take...remove Rigby as the major on the BBVA as the...she is the...she's not the alternate. She's...what's the word I want to use? Primary, thank you, the primary. Remove her as the primary in the BBVA. And I'd also like to put her on as...on the League of California Cities, as put her as the primary on the League of California Cities, if I could do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that change, and I would go ahead and move that we accept your appointments with those changes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So the next thing on our agenda is, there's no public hearings, so we're going to oral communications, and I have three of them here. And the first person with oral communications is Kathy Braunbecker.
Thank you. Good evening, and happy holidays to everyone. I want to say how proud I am of Moonlight Cultural Foundation's achievements represented this evening, and especially Moonlight Stage Productions' successful summer. I am the artistic director emeritus and founder of Moonlight Amphitheater, and I'm before you because of the recent news that Moonlight and the city of Vista has decided to cancel their winter season in, starting in 2016. Because I started both the summer and winter programs, I'm very close to that programming. The Moonlight's winter season is 20 years old. It produces on 45 nights in the winter season. At 150 patrons a night, that makes about 7,000 patrons served by the winter season playhouse. I'm surprised that if there have been letters and complaint about what is proposed, what is onstage at that playhouse, because I've attended everything, and I think the quality is high caliber, professional, and kudo, a great tribute to this city's support. It's hard to understand. Moonlight Presents is going to have its birth, and that was a program that took its, that was originated in 2008, when we opened the new stagehouse. It's a great idea. The program is great for the public. I couldn't be more excited for the city and for what that means for the amphitheaters extension. However, I don't believe that that program was invented to eliminate the winter season, from my perspective. The winter playhouse, the AVO playhouse, will now become a rental facility, which is fine, but what we miss in that situation is the incredible programming that Moonlight can do, which is professional adult theater in a season. You will see in the rental, the rentals that will happen at the AVO, lots of youth theater, which is great for the community. And Moonlight is only in the AVO playhouse three months of the year. Just to remind the city and the city council, in 1992, the council asked Jim Porter and Kathy Brindell, who were my bosses at the time, to participate in the renovation, actually do the renovation of the AVO playhouse. The playhouse was built with block grant funds, with redevelopment funds, and it was initiated to revive a dying downtown. It was very clear, Moonlight at that point had done three or four years of their winter season in the Brengle Recreation Center. It was clear we had an audience, so we were selected to be the central focus in the downtown area. Now that that revitalization is booming, and what could be better for the city, it's hard to understand that the winter season is somehow irrelevant and not, doesn't belong there. I want to remind the council of the big wins for the city of Vista with the winter season. That is that we got three national endowments for the arts grants for the work that we were doing, which is to serve an underserved population. We, awards for ensemble work, for scenic design, costume design, actors' work, and being part of a revitalized downtown. I've been told that there are parking problems that our patrons have when they come to the AVO winter season, and that's anyone that's going to come. I think there's solutions to that. Signet Theater ropes off parking lots in the area of Old Town San Diego and designates them for patrons of the theater. I'm about to wrap up. Thank you. This is a very fortunate community to have Moonlight Amphitheater in its heart, and the AVO playhouse as the jewel of downtown. Both of the programs are decades old and rich with patrons and programming. I hope that you might make room for it all. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you did for the Moonlight and AVO. Our next speaker is Joseph Palma, I've got my glasses on, Palma.
My name is Joseph Palma, I'm humbled to come to this forum to address my concern, and especially humbled after the things that have occurred here, all of the work that's been discussed at this meeting. But this is an issue that my neighbors, myself, have been dealing with, and I have gone to the neighbors about the peafowl that are in our neighborhood. And I know this sounds rather mundane, but we've tried to deal with this with the neighbor personally, and we've tried going to the authorities of the city, and they keep on telling us that there's nothing that they can do about these peafowl. But we do need sleep, and these birds are obnoxious, and they start their mating season in January, and it doesn't end until May. And I want to know, they told me there's one catch, if this is a public nuisance, they might be able to do something about it. Who do I call? I don't want to call the Sheriff's Department. That's a waste of resource. I don't know who to address this to. Does anyone on the council have any suggestions?
I might suggest Mr. Palma talked to Ally Zimmerman, our Assistant City Manager, who's in the back. She oversees the code enforcement division, which also deals with animal control.
And do you think, though, that the neighbors' right to have sleep or to preempt, I mean, that we will be able to have some kind of a resolution this season, all last season? This was an ongoing occurrence every single night.
So I can't, I can't comment on your situation, but I know that Ally can address your efforts, and we can see where that goes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. John Lundblad.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, John Lundblad, 1160 via Santa Paolo. First time I've been here. I haven't been before a city council for a couple of years now, but good to be back. A couple of nice words. First of all, in retirement, since CDBG funds ran out at the city of Oceanside, and Marjorie decided I would better resign than kick somebody else out of a job, one of the things I did was join the Senior Volunteer Patrol of the San Diego Sheriff's Department. And I wanted to thank the council and especially the city manager and his staff, Ally and Cheryl, for the great work they do in supporting the work of the Senior Volunteer Patrol. We try to be of service to the city of Vista and, as we can, help the sworn officers by relieving them of traffic control duties at times. I would invite you, if you've never had the opportunity to ride along with one of the senior patrol, to come along with us some day. Your only unfortunate part is that you have to sit in the backseat. The positive side of it, it is a white car, not one of the sheriff's car, so you don't have to be worried about being photographed in the backseat of a sheriff's vehicle. Hopefully, none have ever been there. Secondly, I wanted to express my thanks to the Public Works Department for some months ago cleaning up what had become a public dumping area on what I believe is Caltrans land on Hacienda, just west of Pomelo. Since then, no more dumping has occurred. I think there is some Public Works plan for it. Unfortunately, some of our local off-roaders still consider that part of an off-road park. As you can see, after any major rainstorm, it probably will be worse after this weekend. Along with that, though, the dumpers have found that there's another place on La Tortuga by Hacienda, where since they can't dump there anymore, they've decided they can dump there farther back, but that's probably more of a code enforcement issue than Public Works. And one last concern, we're excited about all the new housing going up along Breeze Hill. It's going to be exciting. It's going to be exciting to have the new CHP office opened up as well. However, I think that once all of that has been completed, traffic along Breeze Hill will no longer match its name and certainly move more like its feeder street of La Tortuga. So that may be a future pro, sorry about that. I had to put that in there and there. But anyway, my thanks especially for the work of the, support of the Sheriff's Department, and for the work of Public Works in keeping our city as clean as they are. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That's very nice to have a positive comment at the end of our meeting.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. Okay, so with that, we're going to our remarks, part of the, and I have a few little things to, comments to say here. I'm seeking nominations for the mayor's 2014 Person or Business of the Year Award. This is a program that I started last year to recognize a community member or business member who has, you know, volunteered and provided time towards civic improvement, beautification, or the betterment of Vista. So the winner is recognized at the Chamber State of the Community Luncheon in January. The applications are online at cityofvista.com and are due, they're the first week in January, let's say January the 5th might be one of the dates. The city's also accepting applications for the 2015 Spring Leadership Academy. This program provides you with a great opportunity to get to know the city that you live in. The program runs from March 4th through April 14th, and applications are on the city's website also, and will be accepted until all the slots are filled. This is our only city council meeting this month, and I want to wish the city council, our city staff, and all the members of our community a happy holiday season, and I will pass this on to my, rest of my council members here. I will start with Deputy Mayor Aguilara. Do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I do just one point of business. As part of my outside duties, I guess, on outside boards, I serve on the North County Dispatch Joint Powers Association, NCDJPA. I can always, I always forget that one. But anyhow, we have an agreement that is going to be coming in front of council, and it's, we just recently hired a new attorney, and he caught a problem basically with the JPA, and as a member, we could be left holding the bag if other cities started backing out of that JPA. So he's amending that agreement so that everybody basically has a stake, and there's basically recourse for the remaining entities in the JPA. And so I encourage you to, you know, review it on your own, but hopefully you will support it. We need this, as we are the biggest stakeholder, I believe, in the JPA. So we, you know, we want to protect ourselves. So that is going to be due next February. That vote for the JPA should be coming in front of us here shortly after the attorney gets a chance to review it. I did want to comment on the, first of all, the VVVA and their tree lighting ceremony. It went off perfectly. I thought that was a great event, well-attended. I'm glad and thankful that they moved it to the Krikorian. I think that was a great spot. You had a big audience there, and had some great vendors there. It was just great. I mean, I'm glad you guys did that. And also wanted to comment on the Chamber's event for the parade. I said something earlier, but it definitely was a great event as well. Well-attended again, and just a lot of fun, and I hope we can continue this on. And these are all family events, and Vista has a lot of family, I guess, events throughout, and I appreciate the VVVA and the Chamber keeping this a family event and keeping this tradition going in the city of Vista. So I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, safe holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
First, I wanted to see if the council colleagues might be amenable to placing an item on the January agenda. We've had this briefly come up in the past about how items are put on the agenda, so I'd like to have that put on as a discussion item at a future meeting.
I'm certainly agreeable to that.
Okay. Okay.
And with that, I wish everyone a happy holiday season and a Happy New Year.
Councilmember Franklin.
I'd just like to say it's an honor to have the opportunity to serve with each of you, and it's a pleasure to be aboard, and look forward to doing a great job for the people of Vista, and I would second your comments, wishing all the city and our residents a happy holiday season.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report the outside meeting with the League of Cities Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman, and I went to the League meeting this month, and Christmas Kenzie came down, and it was just basically a wrap-up of some of the items that the League has done in 2014 and some of the things that we'll be addressing in 2015, and a recap of some of the bills that we had been working on, helping to draft legislative language. So I'll be looking forward to January, because we'll have a whole new stack of things to be considering in January for that. I also did want to say thank you very, very much to the city manager and staff for the holiday decorations. I appreciate it very much. It gives us a little bit of a different feel this year, and I appreciate it. And also to the VVVA, and Brett had left already, but Ashley is still here in the Chamber of Commerce, for the excellent Christmas activities that we have here in Vista. The tree lighting ceremony was really wonderful, and it was very, very well-done, well-attended, and I have to say, one of the most spectacular events of the day was when the entire community who had gathered out there at the tree lighting ceremony gathered around the tree. They were 15, 20 deep. I don't know how many people there were, that everyone in the community sang "Happy Birthday" to Mayor Ritter. And they had a candle, a cup, little cakes made her a small, or a small cake or a giant cupcake. I'm not sure which way you go with that one, and let her blow out the candle. And I have to say, that was really a beautiful thing, and very well-done, Mr. Kaiser.
It was fun.
And several people came up to me after that event and commented that they were not from Southern California, they're from the Midwest, and how much it really made them feel like they were back home in Iowa, and one lady was from Nebraska, that it really gave them a hometown feel, and isn't that what we love about Vista? Vista's a beautiful place, and so I want to say thank you for those events. And the parade as well was spectacular, and I liked the shorter route, and I don't know if that's something that we're going to consider keeping, but I thought it went really, really well. So thank you for that, and I also want to say welcome to our newest colleague, Councilwoman Franklin.
I thought it was interesting, too, in the parade, because I was at the other end by the curbside cafe there, and I was standing, and the parade would stop for a long time, and it was, you know, why was it stopping? We found out the Sprinter was going by, so they had to stop the parade for the Sprinter to go by. And so they did it like maybe, I think, three different times. It's a long parade. You had, what, 75, do you remember? 75 different units and bands and horses, and I think every kid in Vista was in the parade. There were lots of--
And that's as it should be, too.
It was a great, but it was a great parade. So it was a fun, fun, fun day, so.
And also, I just want to say thank you always to city staff for the great job that you do for us and for the city.
Yes, and wish them all happy holidays, our staff.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
So our city manager might have something to say over here.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate you and Deputy Mayor Aguilara for being re-elected to a new term, and want to congratulate our new councilmember, John Franklin, on being elected, and I look forward to getting to work with you more and building a relationship. Want to let everybody in the audience know that there's a reception in the back for all three of the successful candidates. We have cake, and so please, after the meeting, celebrate with us. And then two housekeeping items. One is the holiday watch program through the Sheriff's Department is in full swing, and so we have staffed up over the holidays with the Sheriff's Department to be in shopping centers, neighborhoods, and so there's a definite presence when you're out this winter. So please watch out for that, and thank you to the Sheriff's Department. And lastly, the city offices will be closed on December 25th and 26th, as well as January 1st and January 2nd. The library will be closed January 25th and 6th, as well as January 1st, and reopen on the 2nd, and that means that if you have trash delivery, which is on Thursday or Friday, that'll be pushed back one day during those two weeks. And if you need to recycle any holiday trees, that'll be done through EDCO, and that's, will happen between December 26th and January 12th.
I heard that you can put them on your curb this year, the trees.
Yes, you can.
And there's also a drop-off place, a couple of drop-off places for them.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, our city attorney, Darryl Piper. I haven't heard from you today. You haven't said anything to say.
It's been a very good day. And I would like to echo the city manager's congratulations to the mayor, deputy mayor-- to the mayor, deputy mayor, and to Councilmember Franklin on your election, reelections, as the case may be, and to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And our city clerk, Mercy Killian.
I just want to say I'm happy the election's over. And it's a privilege to work with all of you, and have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you. And Amanda, the other, Amanda's on both ends. Do you have anything today?
I just, happy holidays, and it was my first election season, and it was wonderful.
Yeah.
And welcome to our new council member, Franklin.
It was kind of exciting today. I don't know if you noticed, my daughter had, my week-old granddaughter, grandson, actually, we have a baby a week ago, so it was kind of nice to have them here tonight. So that, and a little three-year-old, so, and the 22-year-old grandson. I have two grandfamilies. So anyway, I guess we're all done tonight, so I would call this adjourned, and happy holidays to everyone. Oh, yeah, reception. Don't forget to eat cake. Everybody has to eat cake.